Good morning.
Good evening. Today is Monday, November 11th, and it is 5:34 PM. And we are going to start our work session with an update of the Debbie Fleming, the man.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for my straight. Parks and Rec update, boys hoopsters elite for grades six through eight competitive basketball league registration fee is $95. This registration ends December 6th. The season begins January 18th and runs through March 8th. Volunteer coaches needed for junior hoopster season. Contact 719-553-2790 for more information. This Wednesday, we will be unveiling the new fire department's tallest ladder truck at 1:00 PM. You're all invited to the unveiling of Truck 52 at Station 4, located at 2201 Lake Avenue. You'll hear from Fire Chief Barb Huber and the manufacturer about the process in bringing the new apparatus to the city. If you guys haven't seen it yet. The Ice Cup is Saturday, November 16th, Public Fire versus Public Police for its eighth annual event. Money raised from the event will be used to support various youth programs. Tickets are $10 and they will go on sale soon. Check Public Police Department, Public Fire Department, and Pablo City social media for more information, and that's this Saturday at 3:00 PM. And then also this Saturday from 8:00 AM until noon for all city and county residents, we will be hosting a household hazardous waste, no cost of the event. And if you're looking what you can and can't bring, check out or visit the city's social media, Pablo Department of Public Health and Environment for that list. And we also have it up on the screen of what you can and can't bring. And that concludes our updates.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anything from council this evening? And we have Mr. Boston, are you on Zoom?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to our next guest, and that is going to be Mr. Bill Romero and his colleagues from Capital Success Group, and they're going to be updating us on the upcoming legislation for 2025.
Thank you, Madam Chair, President Aleth, Mayor Graham, members of City Council. First of all, happy Veterans Day, and for those that are in the room that are veterans, thank you for your service. I always take this opportunity on Veterans Day. My nephew, Daniel Aaron Romero, was the first service member from Colorado and the first National Guardsman to be a casualty of the global war on terror. He died on April 17th, 2002. He was a sergeant, and he was killed along with three other members of the Army trying to dismantle a bomb. So I thank him for his service and thank all the veterans for their service today. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing us to present this evening. Wanted to talk to you just a little bit about the governor's November 1st budget that we sent to all of you. And we sent you both the full text of the budget, but then we sent you our analysis of that budget. And just wanted to talk about a few things that we think are important to Pablo and that we'll be following for the city of Pablo. As the governor said in his presentation, he said that the proposal sounds a cautionary note about the upcoming budget, saying Colorado's economy continues to be strong and outpaced the nation. However, this year's budget requires tough choices as lower inflation restricts the amount of revenue the state can keep under the, under Tabor. As they, as we did the analysis on this budget, there's about $391 million of new money available for spending. The bad news portion of this is that when you look at some of the things that they're required to do, including a caseload increases, capital construction, common policies, and various operating costs, it leaves them about $638 million in a shortfall, and it required the governor to do some balancing proposals. As we looked at the analysis of the cuts, I think the governor did the best he could to minimize cuts to local government. We're going to continue to analyze that. Key elements of his plan include Medicaid and public safety increases, pulling back some provider rates, additional. One of the important things that we were happy about was he did increase support for County Welfare Administration, which impacts Pablo significantly. In the area of public safety, one of the things we wanted to point out to you is that that part of the budget has about $22.1 million total. This includes $15 million for emergency communications, system enhancement. And the piece that we wanted to point out, and we'd like to work with your grant writers in Pablo, is about $3.5 million for community safety programs. And then $1.7 million to increase the juvenile detention bed cap, and $2 million for juvenile delinquency prevention, another one that will have grants associated with that. And again, we would welcome working with your grant writers to look at that. $7.6 million to expand the capacity at Fort Lovin', and $6.1 million to expand community corrections capacity. In the area K-12, what we wanted to point out is that the governor's going to delay full implementation of the K-12 education formula. But some things to point out is that the governor did increase funding for rural schools and provided an increase for at-risk special education and English language learner student proficiency. In terms of early education, which I know that this council's really been involved with and had a significant concern and advocacy for, there's $23.1 million for CCAP, universal preschool and early intervention. And finally, or excuse me, in the area of physical and behavioral health, this budget increases Medicaid funding by $1.4 billion total funds, including $458 million in general funding to meet the higher forecast for Medicaid caseload. It also increases some of the budget for the state hospital in Pablo. And then finally, in terms of higher education, he proposes to invest about $12.1 million to support institutions and an increase in financial aid of $2.3 million. And I will turn it over to Ryan to talk to you just briefly about the post-election results. Obviously, we were following a number of the races, and I will have him report out to you on that.
Thanks, Gil. Good evening, members of the council, Mayor Graham and staff. Tonight, I'll be providing an overview of election results, including leadership changes and the outcomes of key ballot measures. So we'll start with the Senate. In the Senate, it's actually status quo. The Democrats hold a strong majority with 23 seats compared to 12 for the Republicans. Senator Coleman was newly elected as the president of the Senate, with Senator Rodriguez as Majority Leader and Senator Michelson Janey as President Pro Tem. For other key roles, Senator Henrickson from Southern Colorado was chosen as whip. Senator Roberts is caucus chair, and the Joint Budget Committee members from Senate Democrats include Senator Bridges and Senator Amable. For Senate Minority Leadership on the Republican side, it's Senator Paul Lundeen as Minority Leader. Cleve Simpson stepping in as Assistant Minority Leader. And other leadership roles include Senator Pelton, Byron Pelton as caucus chair, Janice Rich as whip, and Senator Barbara Kirkmire returning to the JVC. Now, in the House, Democrats currently hold 43 seats to Republicans 20, and there's still two races that are too close to call. However, Republicans are leading in both of those. If the Republicans hold on to both of those seats, it will wipe out the Democrat's supermajority. They'll still have a strong majority, but if the Republicans keep these last two seats and will definitely have those, the results by Thursday, but we should, you know, we might have it sooner. And if the Republicans pick up those two seats, then they will have 22 in total. Representative Julia McCloskey was named Speaker with Representative Duran, Majority Leader, and Jennifer, and Representative Bacon as Assistant Minority Leader. Those three positions are same as, the same as last year. And Representative Martinez and Joda were voted as co-whips. Representative Lindsey and Joseph as co-caucus chairs. House Minority on the Republican side, leadership roles are set with Representative Rose Puglisi as Minority Leader, Representative Winter as Assistant Minority Leader, and Representative Armagost will serve as whip. And Representative Hardsuk was elected as caucus chair. Now, just to briefly go over the results of the statewide ballot measures, of the statewide ballot measures that passed were Veteran Tax Exemption, or Amendment G, Judicial Adjudicated Board, Amendment H, Bail for First Degree Murder Suspects, Amendment I, Marriage Definition, Amendment J, Right to Abortion, Amendment 79, Sports Betting Tax Revenue, Proposition JJ, Firearms Tax, Proposition KK, Parole Eligibility, Proposition 128, Veterinary Professional Associate, Proposition 129, and the Police Support Fund, Proposition 130. The four initiatives that failed were Big Cat Trophy Hunting, Proposition 127, Rank Choice Voting, Proposition 131, School Choice, Amendment 80, and the Ballot Initiative Deadlines, Amendment K. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. That is my report for tonight. Thank you.
Hey, Bill. I have a couple of questions. My first question is about the upcoming Tabor refunds that people are expecting to get because of the influx of statewide revenue. Can you talk a little bit about that?
So there will be Tabor refunds. They'll be much smaller this go around, Councilor Martinez. And that is as a result of a number of the tax credit bills that were passed last year, including around childcare. Obviously, those are bills that council supported. There will be a tax refund. We don't know exactly what that is. We'll start to report some of those things out in mid-November and early December.
And for the public safety ballot measures that just passed, tell a little bit more about how that's anticipated to affect us?
You want, I don't know if you have, do you have that language in front of you, Ryan? Or we can, we can certainly.
Well, the, the, the big one is the Proposition 130, which directs the legislature to appropriate $350 million. The, the thing that's unclear is, and it wasn't in the ballot language, and it was kind of talked about all summer, is does the legislature have to appropriate that in, you know, in this session, or could they do it over the next, say, five or 10 sessions? So there, we're, we're waiting to find out more about that. And that, that was the big one, because that was the, the $350 million price tag. So, yeah, well, we're waiting to learn more about that, exactly how that's going to work.
Yeah, and just as a follow-up to that, Councilor Martinez, the Joint Budget Committee will start their work tomorrow. The governor's going to come in and do a presentation on Wednesday, and we expect to hear from him on the ballot initiatives, and of course, obviously, the, the, the balancing plan that he has recommended in terms of the 600 million. So we'll get you more detail on sort of implementation around the ballot initiatives.
Yeah, I mean, that one specifically, I guess, to Ryan's point, it's going to have a, hopefully, a huge fiscal and positive fiscal impact for Pablo. You know, and as we're building our own budget, it's, I'm hopeful to know that we'll have some support from the statewide, you know, side. So I guess more information is coming.
Yeah, and then it, and I know that the city's facing tough, you know, bu- budget challenges. We, what we have tried to do, Councilor Martinez, with this specific budget, and that's a priority for us, is to look for those areas on the local government side that potentially can provide resources to the, to the city of Pablo, but specifically around public safety. You're exactly right. And that's why we were mentioning some of the, the grants, of grant programs that we'd like to talk to your grant writers about.
That'd be great. And then, I guess, you know, I know that you have lobbied for specific legislation. Are, are grants within your purview to lobby board?
Yes, I'm, well, what, what we try to do in terms of, of looking at these, you know, depending on where, we assume that these will all be within the Department of Public Safety. What we try to do is influence the parameters of those public safety grants, like, you know, how are they going to distribute? Are they going to have a priority on, on communities depending on, on their demographics? Poor communities, rural communities, you know, distribution based upon geography. Those are the things that you can provide advocacy on. But we'll get, as I said, we'll get more detail from the governor when he comes in to present to the Budget Committee on Wednesday, and we'll report that out to you.
Cool. Thanks. Anyone else from council?
All right. Well, thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate you coming tonight. It's updated.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. See you later. We will go on to our next subject, and that is going to be our next guests are Joshua Silverthorne and Nadine Phillips from the Center for Employment Opportunities CEO Colorado.
Okay, I want to take a moment to introduce the, the, and Josh, who you just mentioned, that CEO is Colorado Department of Employment Opportunities. They are an entity that provides a number of services to municipalities and other groups here locally in Pablo. They have been working with CDOT under a contract, where they have provided services to help with roadside cleanups. So we have had several opportunities to work side by side with them on different, different cleanup efforts that have gone on in the past several months. On the national service and fast food, they were actually here in time as well, also in terms of what on the north side. So I'd like to talk to you kind of about their organization, their mission, and how they might be a, a partner with the city here. So with that, I'll turn it over to them.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, City Council, City Council of Pablo, Mayor Graham and staff, thank you for taking the time to talk to us, Center for Employment Opportunities. Like, Andrew Sam, my name is Josh Silverthorne. I am the Program Manager overseeing expansion in Pablo. And beside me is Nadine Phillips. She is our Senior Policy Associate for Center for Employment Opportunities. So before we begin, we want to start talking about why we're here and why we feel that the Center for Employment Opportunities will be a valuable part of the Pablo community. CEO was fortunate enough to receive federal funding from Senator Hickel Lopez to expand our employment services for formerly incarcerated people in the state of Colorado. After deliberate research on the services can make the biggest impact, Pablo was selected for this expansion. We are very excited to share with you today about our services and the impact that Center for Employment Opportunities can have on an underserved population and the Pablo community in large. Go ahead. So, who are we on? Center for Employment Opportunities is an employment social enterprise that supports formerly incarcerated job seekers. Our mission is to provide immediate, effective, and comprehensive employment services exclusively to people recently released from incarceration. Here at CEO, we believe that everyone, regardless of their past, deserves a chance to shape a stronger future for themselves, their families, and their communities. People who come to CEO, they're wanting to work and start, and want to start working, but they face a lot of challenges to do so. We exclusively serve people who have recently returned home from incarceration, like I said, majority of whom are either on probation or parole. CEO exists to create greater opportunities for people who face multiple barriers to economic success. And we're here to remove barriers for people who have been justice impacted. Now, I'd like to talk to you about the process that we go through when they come to the Center for Employment Opportunities.
Oops, sorry.
There we go. Awesome. So CEO's program model. CEO has an evidence-based program model that helps participants regain the skills and confidence good for successful transitions into the workforce. And this slide is going to kind of go through a little bit of what that looks like. So they're going to come in and do an orientation. It's going to be a two-day orientation to help prepare them for not only training as CEO, but training for the general workforce. They're going to begin conversations with, we're going to begin conversations with them about their goals, aspirations, basically, what do we want to do for a career? We're also going to be in the prepared room to rejoin the workforce with local city or local Pablo community. This includes expectation norms of what a general employer would learn, so they're best prepared from day one. From, and that takes about two days. From there, they're going to go into transitional work and laborally training. That is average about two to six months in our program. Transitional work is going to be daily consistent work for CEO, working onsite in Pablo. It's going to be trash beautification, trash cleanup, things of that nature. They're also going to be paid daily, which is a big barrier for people who have been incarcerated to get that daily pay to help remove barriers. The enhanced training that is going to be extended, paid training opportunities, it's going to be things like paid CDL training, as well as other areas of employment, including construction, information technology, and an emerging leaders program. This is all part of the CEO model. While they're doing transitional jobs and getting a nice training, they're also going to get job coaching and job development. The job coaching is going to be a one-on-one support for job readiness. What that looks like is they're going to get resumes and interview skills, and we're also going to help them remove any barriers that they have to employment, like transportation, homelessness, through referrals with other local Pablo organizations. They'll also be working with a job developer or job development. We're going to connect with participants with local employers for full-time jobs. So they're going to be working for us. They're going to be getting resume building and vocational skills from us. But we're also going to be helping them with local employers to try to get them full-time jobs. The job developer is also going to help tailor their resumes to get those full-time jobs. And then lastly, they're going to get up to a years with the support from CEO. What that looks like is we're going to provide ongoing support to ensure participant's success in that full-time job. It can be things of getting promotions, handling issues that may come up while they're trying to work in that full-time job, and again, removing barriers to be successful. We see a lot of employers, they don't know how to handle outside barriers, and that's one area that we specialize in, is being able to refer out, to help them. Yeah, and so now I'll turn it over to my colleague, Nadine Phillips.
Thanks so much, Josh. Thanks, everybody. I'm just going to speak a little bit more to the need for our services in the Pablo community, as well as the impact of our program that we see from other work we've been doing in Colorado. As a service provider dedicated to increasing public safety and workforce participation while decreasing recidivism, we see significant need for our services in Pablo, which is among of the smaller cities in Colorado with a high incarceration rate of 612 per 100 city residents. Furthermore, Pablo County is among the top 10 counties and states that are home to 88% of Coloradoan residents in state prisons. We know the majority of individuals who are incarcerated will return to their communities at some point, and when they do, we need to make sure that they have access to the proper services so that they can become productive members of society. And CEO has proven to be highly effective as a solution for decreasing incarceration and increasing economic mobility for this person, excuse me, population. Evaluations of CEO show that participants in our program had a 22% reduction in recidivism. It was 48% increase in employment outcomes after three years when measured with a comparison group. Our Colorado programs also recently underwent an additional evaluation that looked at CEO's impact on earnings and economic ability for participants. And I want to take a moment to describe these findings that are presented on this slide on the blue glass that you'll see. To the left of the red vertical line, you'll see all of the earnings of participants with previous work experience prior to coming to CEO. And you'll see that these earnings start to decrease sharply as they near that red line, which indicates the events that initiate enrollment in our program. Now, to the right of the line, we'll see participants' earnings within their first two quarters of enrollment with CEO. And you can see the sub-increase in earnings compared to wage trends prior to the major without program. Evaluation shows that on average, after two quarters at CEO, individuals experience average earnings increases of nearly 49% compared to what they were making four quarters prior to enrollment. And this increase in earnings is even more significant for those in the bottom 25% higher, for those in that bottom blue dotted gray, of pre-enrollment earnings, or those deemed hardest to employ. These individuals saw nearly 80% increase in their earnings. Now, while our data is important and we pride ourselves on being data-driven and evidence-based, the real experiences of our participants are equally, if not more, important to showing the impact of our work. And so I wanted to talk about one of our participants with you briefly today. Carmen Ortega came to our Colorado Springs office at the suggestion of her probation officer. She had battled addiction for many years, resulting in recurring interactions with the criminal legal system. And she came to CEO, ready to build a solid foundation for herself that would support her sobriety and help her rebuild relationships with her children. Carmen came to us shortly before the COVID-19 pandemic, which had a significant impact on our services and the formerly incarcerated population. Our ability to allow participants like Carmen to earn and gain, which through our transitional work crews was quite limited due to safety concerns, but we were still able to provide participants with additional financial resources in lieu of those services we usually provide. I am so pleased to share that Carmen was able to complete CEO's program, find housing, continue her sobriety, and rebuild the trust of her children and grandchildren. Not only did she complete the program, but she now works at CEO Colorado Springs as a site supervisor, where she oversees new participants on the transitional work crews that Josh described earlier. Carmen has also found her voice and advocacy, and has spoken to the public about the unique means of justice impacted Coloradans. I encourage you to take time to read her full story, and those of others who've served, you can scan the QR code. It will take you straight to her story on our website. Now, Josh spoke about CEO's full program, but I just want to take a moment to reiterate one service that is quite unique to CEO and has an immediate impact on the community participants, and that is the transitional work crew component. So it's immediate and the job paid learning that we provide every single participant who comes through our doors. And part of what makes this so unique and effective is that it is working both for the community at large and for the participants coming through our doors simultaneously. And you'll see some of those benefits in this slide. For the participants, we are immediate, we're engaging them with the workforce, which we find to be incredibly important to ensuring a long-term, successful reentry into society. They're getting that immediate daily pay that Josh mentioned, so we're given a bit of financial stability from the get-go. We're also able to provide wraparound services and professional feedback. They're being supervised every day and getting feedback on what they did well, maybe what they need to improve on that day. And at the same time, the community is benefiting from an adaptable, reliable workforce that can meet their immediate needs, that they may be having trouble meeting. It also promotes the chance to hire in the community at large, and it gives partners to have a chance to cultivate retention. They can see our participants who are working for the labor needs and the safety facilities stand out. Then we have that direct connection and can add them to apply for our full-time job. So very soon, it's a hiring approach. And we partner with public and private entities for this work, including state departments of transportation. Um, and, uh, we partner with public and private entities for this work, including state departments of transportation, some of the departments of parks, public works, uh, departments, code enforcement, and much more. And establishing these partnerships in Pueblo is key to the success of our program. And as interface, I mentioned, we've already started having some of these conversations with departments like the Department of Public Works and Department of Parks and Land. So, again, we're just, we're very excited to be here tonight with you all to talk a little bit about our program and the prospect of expanding our program to serve Pueblo and the Pueblo community. We have begun and will continue to have conversations with a variety of local stakeholders to ensure we're meeting, uh, the community need and providing the best support for the individuals who walk through our doors. Uh, we have a bunch of folks to make this possible, and some of them are outlined on this slide. It starts, of course, with our public leaders, so city council, mayor, county. And making sure that we're hearing from you what the needs in your community are and where we can best be of service. And making sure we have strong participant referral pipelines with law enforcement, local parole and probation. Uh, transitional jobs, we've talked about this already a little bit, but various public and private entities that need immediate labor. Support service is also quite important to us. Employment is all bread and butter, but we know that so much more goes into a successful reentry than just employment alone. And so having strong partners that we can refer our participants to as needed is quite important. Um, in-demand training, making sure that those who want to pursue advanced credentials and training have the opportunity to do so in a supported way that they can be successful in, and then finding employment, working directly with employers with various chambers of commerce to make sure that we are meeting, uh, the employment part of the training to employment pipeline. So, thank you so much, members of council, mayor, grand, and the community members here today, uh, for your time and attention tonight. We are happy to take any questions.
Right. Thank you. Um, any questions from council?
Question.
Okay, we'll start with the counselor Latino.
So, tell me what the ages are, because, uh, I have concerns in relation to teenagers. Are you working with the Kamaa School for Boys?
So, our program is for eighteen plus, so we work with adults and over.
So, you're not working with, you're not working with, uh, young people from the ages of thirteen to eighteen that have been incarcerated?
We do not specialize in, in people who are not yet of legal age of adulthood or more. It's because we are employing them. And so that employment aspect gets a little trickier.
Okay, so let's, let's take the thirteen-year-old, fourteen-year-old, fifteen-year-old, sixteen-year-old, seventeen-year-old out of it. Let's talk about the eighteen-year-old. Are you working with those?
Yes, absolutely.
And so are you working with them? Are, are you working with all the facilities in the state as an example, Kamaa School for Boys?
So, we partnered more closely with parole and probation offices. And so we have an office in Denver and in Colorado Springs, and our local program staff can speak more specifically to exactly who those partners are.
So, if you have an office, office in Denver, you're, you're, you're not, what you're telling me is you're not working with, with them in, in, in close, in, in, in a close manner to, to work with those women that are at the Kamaa School for Boys that are aged seventeen, eighteen years old?
That's my line.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Martinez.
Yeah, hi. Um, I'm just, I got a lot of questions, but, um, I have a law enforcement background, but that doesn't mean I'm going to support a great, I think this is a great program, by the way, for what's worth. Back in the day, I don't know if it still applies today. How do you get a? We had a, a policy that if you had two felons together, they couldn't participate within the same area. How do you get around that?
Can you explain it one more time about you saying two felons?
Felons, if they're in association with each other, they couldn't really be in close contact because of the, they would get together.
Yeah, so we don't usually run into issues with that, and I think that's because of our close relationships with various parole and probation officers. They're familiar with our programs. Um, I can definitely talk to our program leadership on the ground to ensure, to see if that is something that they've come up with. But it's not typically an issue that we see with the folks who are coming through our doors.
And we're also going to have constant supervision from the managers, supervisors. Um, we're going to have line-of-sight supervision, vans are GPS monitored. So, they're going to be constantly monitored in any capacity to ensure the safety of both the participants, but also the community at large.
What violations do you have to have to get kicked out of the program?
So, they, I mean, we try to be as welcoming, because we will work with all individuals who are returning from incarceration, regardless of their conviction. Um, and so we're going to work with them as closely as possible to overcome the challenges that they're having when it comes to being removed from the program. Um, I would say we're going to go further than a typical employer, like, uh, if something was to happen. But it's going to be a conversation that we have with the participant, with the probation officer, parole officer, um, to try to best beat, meet that challenge.
Uh, what range of, uh, say, Mr. Menos or Fong is great, mate, or how do you do from running into CEO program?
Well, it'll be less so the record that someone comes to us. Again, as Josh said, we, we take anyone regardless of the conviction that they have. And we actually find that our program is most affected at those who are admitting to high-risk of recidivism, excuse me, recidivism. Um, it's more so behavioral when you're in the program. It's a vigorous program. Sometimes people are not ready for it. So, if you are not showing up to work, if you are missing what we call your job coach days, where you're working in vocational skills, those are the kinds of things where if you're acting, or if your behavior on a clue is dangerous or illegal, then, you know, then we have to have a conversation about taking you out of the program.
Is there any particular, um, incentives from your viewpoint that are more effective than others? That you think really helps a lot of these folks out?
Yeah, I would say, uh, one to the daily pay aspect of our transitional work crews. Um, we pay minimum wage, um, and we're making sure that people are getting a bit of money every single day that they're working with us versus maybe what it took them in a month or months to, to make inside a facility, they can make a lot quicker when they're with us. Um, but we're also providing, uh, a more streamlined, um, access to benefits like SNAP, if that's something we qualify for, which can be very appealing. And then all the wraparound support services we provide, the job coaching, the resume development. If someone wants to pursue advanced credentialing, they can't simply separate from the workforce to do that. So, how we alleviate that and make it more accessible is we say, okay, we're going to pay for your tuition, and we're going to give you a stipend to offset what you would have been making with us, but you're going to take some time for your career. I think those are some examples of, of the incentives that keep people with us.
You have listed here nine hundred and eighty in Colorado Springs, eight hundred and eighty-six from the incarcerated. Is there a percentage rate? And if it's how many successful, how many fail, anything like that, you can give, you can?
Not off the top of my head. I can tell you that, um, we typically see practically everybody move from unemployment to that transitional job. From there, we'll, we can see a bit of a decline when it comes to our direct placements, what we can't. Um, I don't want to misquote myself, um, but I'd be happy to get back, back to you on that.
Uh, I'd like to concede actually, um, status quo, but are there any other incentives in reference to some of the things that have proved, you know, proven to work? Um, in reference to follow-up, um, for living, for maintaining, getting a house, getting an apartment. How does that work?
Absolutely. So, as a part of the retention services that Josh mentioned, that year-long of following up with our participants, we'll have, um, increments. We call them milestones. So, you have your, your thirty-day milestone of, of employment, sixty, one hundred eighty, two hundred and sixty-five. And each of those milestones, you're receiving a financial benefit, like a one-time check of some amount. And that definitely keeps people coming back. Those people also like to come back to us because they build a rapport with our staff. They want to let us know when they're having successes.
So, most of the money for your fellow jobs through grants, did I take it?
Um, we have a various mix of both public and private. So, we actually, a good amount of our money comes from doing this employment and training through third-party providers. So, that's federal funding through, um, Department of, of Human Services, particularly in Colorado. That provides us with a fifty percent reimbursement on our eligible training costs that have to do with what we call E N T, employment and training. And for employment organization, that's a lot of our cost. So, that's a huge part of our sustainability. Um, then our contracts for the transitional work crews, that's also a huge part of maintaining our sus- sustainability. And then, yes, we, we perceive some philanthropic funds as well. That usually goes to general operating. We want to do some new initiatives, things like that.
Just one last question. Uh, CEO, when you start a program and they, they become a client of yours, follow-up, end the program, follow the future, how does that work?
To clarify, following up after the three hundred and sixty-five days of retention, about the question?
Yeah.
We haven't quite gotten into a, a consistent way of following up past them, but we're looking into that because we do see that our results continue to build on themselves over time. That's something our, what we call our learning and impact team is working on, but as of yet, we don't have a clear cut defined way to get to and following folks. We do find that tracking things like, um, W two data can be helpful if someone is, is active in the system.
Thank you. Good luck.
Counselor Martinez. Right. I think that this is super exciting. Um, I, I guess I'm a little bit confused about the flow of money as well or encouraged to be asked tonight. And maybe this is a Mr. Hayes question. But would our public works office be contracting with you to provide cleanup through public works? Is that what, is that what's happening?
That is probably a bit of a Mr. Hayes question. Um, but so what we will do is we'll work with the city or the department that is interested in the contract to see what the best fit is. Sometimes that is a direct contract. Sometimes that's a subcontractor arrangement. Sometimes that's responding to an R S P. And in other cases, um, we will see a funding that helps us alleviate the cost of a transitional work crew to get it off the ground so that the department doesn't have to front the bill right away. We can sort of start things, uh, going with that. But go ahead and do.
I was just going to add that, uh, obviously their services do come at cost, but, uh, one of the things that needs to happen is if, uh, a part of council is continuing the cleanup efforts throughout the city, that this is one of the outlets through which we can do some of this work. Again, they've been extremely helpful in, in, uh, in some of the cleanup activities that we've done so far. Uh, and, and are looking to do more. Again, with this potential expansion into Pueblo, I think there's multiple benefits that, uh, the community would enjoy. Primarily, of course, the, uh, through our, our need is, is cleanup work. Um, but the other, uh, side benefit or secondary benefit here is clearly that, uh, folks who are trying to get back on their feet have an opportunity to do so. Uh, and this is an outlet that would allow that to happen. So, uh, I'm glad that I'm here talking to you tonight. But, uh, this is just one way or one outlet through which we can continue to do some of the cleanup efforts that we've been doing for the last three years. So.
Uh, and you know, I guess as you're expanding into Pueblo, which is great, and I think, you know, I'm, I think we're all happy that you're coming here to expand services. Um, it, not only do we have our own kind of internal cleanup to cleanup team, which, um, you know, i- is hardworking and cleaning up Pueblo, but we also just, um, work with Catholic charities to have their own cleanup program that hires, um, people who are unhoused. And I would love for, if we could all coordinate, so that way we're not cleaning up the same area multiple times. But also, you know, you're, you're, I guess you're engaging very different populations, but it would be, be great to be coordinated across our cleanup to cleanup Catholic charity, you know, um, uh, program, which is called something that I can't think of right now, and then you all. It would be great to have that coordination.
So, as we're moving forward, that is our, our plan. Um, as I'm the program manager for the expansion here in Pueblo, I've been meeting with local organizations. Andrew is a great example, and he brought up those two, uh, fantastic organizations. Plan is to be moved with them so that we don't, you know, all clean them. Yeah, clean up the same areas, but yeah, we want to, uh, as we expand in the areas, we want to supplement each other and, uh, take over. Um, and so it'll be important to speak with those organizations to see how can we benefit you? How can you, you know, like, we want everyone to grow, more or less.
Great. Um, Counselor Flores.
Yes, I enjoyed your presentation again. I know we've met before, but I think this is an amazing program. Uh, does this work also for cities and, and counties that have, uh, their own jails? And, uh, or is this only for incarcerated people in Department of Corrections?
You're referring to our program specifically?
Yes.
Ideally, it could be for, for everyone. Like I said earlier, to answer the Martinez question, uh, to the, that was Latino, I'm sorry. Um, um, but we, we are most effective with folks who are at that living to high-risk of recidivism who have been in prison for long periods of time or multiple periods of time. So, typically, the folks who are going to benefit most from our program are in DOC, uh, prison correctional facilities and not as a jail. That's not to say that it can't be helpful for that population. It's just to say that as we can do strategically about us giving our services to a community, that's sort of how we start to, to figure out where that ramp is.
And then, uh, my last question has to do with, um, uh, an injury to one of these individuals. Does that rest with your organization, including, uh, an injury while they're working, uh, and would have to be covered by workers' compensation?
Yeah, they have workers' comp, uh, and that's part of the reason that we employ all of our participants ourselves before contracting with a city department, for example. Um, it's so that we're taking on a lot of risk. If you have more questions about that, I do have some of my colleagues who know that work, so we're happy to discuss further. But yeah, that's.
hurdles for any community to assume that kind of risk.
Yeah.
And then lastly, uh, on one of your slides, uh, you might consider changing, uh, that bullet point that says Pueblo is among ten counties home to eighty-eight percent of Colorado residents in state prison. You could read that to mean that eighty-eight percent of our residents in Pueblo are, have all been to prison. And that's not, I know what you're meaning. You're meaning that ten counties accumulated, uh, or in the aggregate, uh, represent eighty-eight percent.
No, yes. Thank you. Yeah, no, we can make that adjustment.
That's, thank you very much.
Anything for me if I said a name? Uh, Mr. Uh, Latino has one more.
Thank you. Um, as was mentioned earlier, we have a program that's being implemented by Catholic charities. So, in your program, hopefully, when we get started, and before we get started, excuse me, you will contact and work with them so that we're doing things in, in a, in a professional manner, working with a team. But basically, as, as counsel Martinez said, um, I, I, I have concerns because this program is something that, that's, that they've been working on for several years. In fact, I made a report here last month. And, and this is a program that, that basically was started in, in Albuquerque, next to another places. I, I don't need to get into that. Cause I wasn't even about to program forward in, in to, to, uh, to this council. But it, it's, it's a situation that I want to see good work happen. I want to see, I want to see teamwork is what I want to see. Okay? And so, um, that's, that's the key for me.
Absolutely. We can do a few more. As Josh said previously, we really do not need to come to a kind of duplicate services or make them more complicated. Speaking to Ca- to Catholic charities will absolutely be one of the next things that we do, especially before starting new services. It sounds like from the population that they are catering to, there could be some crossover. And so it's good to see where that crossover is that we're not duplicating and where we can refer people to.
Basically, they're dealing with a different element. They're dealing with homelessness. They're dealing with a, a, a convicted individual, okay? Uh, someone that's been incarcerated. So, definitely there has to be teamwork involved in all this. Okay, I'm going to have offices here. I'm going to have some on-site that's going to be directing the program here.
That'll be the main. I'll be the one in, on, just down here in Pueblo. Um, I've worked the last year up in Denver, and that was one of the strongest points of CEOs that were able to work with other organizations. With this one in particular, I could see that if they have, uh, people that they cannot work with, we would be a great fit for that, um, to get into our program. So, that was one of the things we ran up into in Denver was, um, some organizations was a little bit more specific about who they could work with and who they couldn't. Um, being as we'll open our doors to anybody with any conviction, um, there's a lot of, uh, con- uh, with homelessness and having incarcerations, those go hand in hand, uh, a lot of times. And so, if they do have people who they can't work with, they'll be one hundred percent be able to work with us. But yeah, I'll be the one that's on the ground here in Pueblo.
And, and, and that's very important because, you know, the nature of everything. And we have two different organizations basically doing the same thing. And your, your, your client has been incarcerated. Thirty of their clients have not. They're just homeless. So, so that, that's a key for me. Thank you.
Well, I, I would think that when any of those organizations are cleaning up the city, they're at the direction, it's coming from the direction of the city. So, that is who is hiring them. That is who will be coordinating. Um, and so if there's duplicate, there's not going to be duplications of cleanups because their assignment will come from somewhere within public works, um, code enforcement, whichever department is having them assist out with their cleanups. Um, and so, I've worked with second chancers for most of my career. And, uh, it's a high maintenance to supervise them. Um, but I've had a lot of success stories come out of that. Different types of work, you know, um, that you can only get them, it's not easy. You can't, they can't work everywhere. Um, and just due to the laws and restrictions and so forth. Um, and they can be tough. And they could be stubborn, and they could be very difficult, but they can also be really good workers and. and they could be stubborn and they could be very difficult, but they can also be really good workers and really good people. Um what do we mean by partnership? What is, you know, when you say partnership, tell us what that means. Obviously, you're asking us like us for something when you say partnership.
So I think that there's a a number of ways that this could um I guess present itself, but the the thoughts of the way would be that there's some budget set aside for cleanup work that could be uh I guess kind of finding an agreement between the city and CEO. Um a- again, the way that they operate, they they establish crews and jump in correctly or wrong, but they they establish uh there are five to six people at a time, right? And so they have the support staff to uh manage those crews, get folks to the uh job sites. Um and then make sure that they're taken care of on the job sites and and the trades that are providing support through their um uh organization, like I guess back at headquarters, right? Uh but ultimately, this expansion into Pueblo, it was new. So it's all with the work that they've been doing uh for CDA that they'd done where I sourced them. Uh it was uh folks from Colorado Springs. Uh but what a great opportunity, I guess, in this particular construct to be able to get folks from here in Pueblo who are again trying to get their feet back underneath them and get started with their life again. Uh this is just one way that uh uh I think you're gonna get double benefit from uh employing a group like this. As far as the coordination between entities, right? This is too easy. There there are way more places to clean than there uh than there is to, right? Then one of the, one of the benefits of having extra hands on deck is that when we are doing this work right now, a lot of times we're taking our streets crews or our swimwear crews or traffic crews offline to go do this work. And that is time spent cleaning rather than performing road maintenance, traffic maintenance, swimwear maintenance. Having the hands on deck to be able to do this stuff is extremely helpful. So I just put that as a matter of consideration for you.
Um also, so we talked about setting budget runnings aside, uh do you all have that set in your budget for twenty twenty-five?
Yes, we allocated three hundred thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, any more questions from council?
Yeah, I probably missed this. Um is this CEO Colorado or is it CEO everywhere or um in reference to measurement to see what you've done compared to what you'd like to do here?
Um, sorry, in reference.
To perform, I mean, I don't know enough about CEO Colorado owner, or I missed, probably missed it.
No, understood. Gotcha. Um so we are a national organization, we're a national nonprofit. However, each of our sites has its own operating budget and local staff, so they they operate as its own entity within the organization. Um some of the data that I spoke about earlier, so that is from our national uh outcomes, but then, for example, the graph on the slide number four, I believe it was, that is specifically to our Denver and Colorado Springs um offices within the last year.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right. Uh I think we are done for um discussed. Uh and everybody seems to have their questions that they needed to ask, and so thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate it. And we'll move on to our last presentation this evening, and that's EV Wedding Miss Plan Adoption by Mr. Andrew Hayes.
And chair members of council, but even the uh hang on just a second, we'll go through full lines of events, but uh first, we're here to present on the uh like the the Wedding Miss Plan with the adults. So that showed the city received a grant of thirty thousand dollars. Uh and the city had a match of ten thousand or fifty thousand dollars. We prepared a an EV Wedding Miss Plan with a vast kind of a strategic overview of the city's um opportunities and challenges in respect to fielding public charging infrastructure for uh EVs as demand for our charging, particularly the public sector uh increases here. The plan also addresses not only, it focuses on the public infrastructure, but it does also have some sections that uh uh talk about charging infrastructure for fleet as well. This does not talk about um electrification of the fleet. It does not talk about um uh those kinds of aspects, but it really focuses on the infrastructure end of this. Uh Public County has an uh EV Wedding Miss Plan as well. Uh so that that plan was um put that kind of in a framework initially for um for us to inform. But ultimately, we received a plan that we were able to develop an EV Wedding Miss Plan that uh discusses the city and identifies uh again our strategic objectives there. Good to go. Um first, I'd like to also acknowledge Aiden Swannus from Drive City, Colorado, is here tonight. Uh he's joining us. Uh Drive City has been a great partner for the city as well in advocating this law and uh providing resources for uh public uh EV charging infrastructure for tech card, uh it's just called tech support, so to speak. Um uh kind of advocating this law positions where we are making sure we're not uh putting barriers in the way of uh considering as EV charging infrastructure, but they've been a great partner here. Aiden is visiting with us tonight, so. Um again, I mentioned uh we went to the grant uh for the development of the EV Wedding Miss Plan. We've been working with a company called Iconogee, who is a a contract partner. Uh the work started in October and uh this uh public event here at the beginning of this month. Uh during that process, there was a, there were multiple public engagement um workshops and surveys that went out. And so a lot of information came back in, and that's uh what's on the basis of if we live in this here, we look through the market assessment and the infrastructure assessment and since policies and recommendations as well. Then the street engagement opportunities in I in May, in July and August was a survey, and then again, we turned to a symposium workshop at the end uh in August and ultimately resulted in about two hundred and seventy folks participating in that survey and a number of community partners as well. So these uh organizations listed here were both public and private entities or has has um participated in and added content and value to the development of this plan. Ultimately, key findings for the um plan included a number of opportunities and challenges, but uh folks who are interested in seeing EVs uh in EV charging infrastructure here have seen some opportunities with respect to improve your quality. Um uh with this, uh with this, uh with this, opportunities for uh different, many websites have been established that will come up as a result of charging. Um also, we'll get simply here about alternative transportation, EVs and uh vehicle to grid technology. This was not, uh I guess, completed without recommendations. There are going to be challenges as well. So people who have never um learning, we may feel like, how do you, how do you get out there and uh risk driving on the road without having the ability to charge your vehicle? So this this phenomenon called ranging variety exists, right? How far can we drive before you have to get a charge? How uh where do I get to my destination? Where will there be a charger available? Um, there were pressures just this past week, uh cold, cold effect on batteries, right? And for battery life and uh strength is a big issue. Uh technical training, skepticism, a few of affordability, accessibility were all issues that were addressed uh during this study. Can I mention four hundred and seventy, there were some responses uh came in from the survey. About thirty, thirty-one percent of folks said that they have uh operated or used EVs for uh work. I'm trying to translate, but they own one, three, and about sixty-three percent of those actually they operate ones for work. Uh sixty percent had never had any of those EVs, and there were there was generally on whether they felt like they would be interested in buying EV in the future, uh about fifty fifty. The motivators and barriers here, so one of the motivators to uh enter into the EV mix is uh the availability of the rebates, which um have been certainly a a um an incentive in investors. Uh but also they're a bit of an environmental impact incentive as well. Uh barriers again, this battery health and the price we cost, this um in turn that batteries obviously do have a uh silver slice and will be given in place over time. Uh you know, we're interested to learn about the uh cost to a vehicle owner and cost of ownership. When we're talking about having batteries replaced at some point, there will be a cost of life. Number one, I mentioned the brains, it's going to be right at this, folks are wary, they don't know how to uh find and sign the other type of infrastructure. Uh there are a lot of apps out there for EV drivers, those EVs also have uh yeah, built into their navigation systems that'll be fine. This is uh one of the chargers. Um sometimes you find the charger and it's unclear whether it's electric or not, and so if you get replaced, you're relying on one charger and some of the water there. Uh that can be a challenge, or if the, if the charger is not working, that's a challenge. Um but uh yeah, now there's time, it takes to charge EV is certainly longer than it takes to fill up your your tank at the pump, right? So with a fast charger, we'll get on this in a second, but you're the fast charger, you can get uh a little bit uh better range with just a couple of hours of target. Uh number two targets, which are kind of low level, uh hey, uh maybe you're a few, you're at forty percent, so you're trying to get to ninety percent, it might be uh you know, twelve to fifteen hours depending on the type of charge you earn, type of, type of vehicle you've got. Again, uh again, the there are um areas that work best, there are some ability of vehicles and partners, and if the partner aren't working, that's certainly a new motivator. Uh so this strategy or this plan here helps to try and address some of these things. One of those areas that the community identified through the program has moved, and the only one that we have system at the top there, so um it was again, a lot of good and a lot of different communities, the overall areas that was identified as important. Uh all of the down to the bottom moves, there's a lot of with somebody who was uh contributing to sustainability outcomes. But together about was a share of the infrastructure, the uh the platform there, the benefits, it's um we're seeing adoption in the food, made the own own designs, the three groups that were surveyed. And I mentioned that three um of those in the space, the market assessment is is uh it's important to understand what charging infrastructure is and what it means if you're I'm just going to go about the speed charge or or direct current fast charges before doing VCF charges. Those are charging stations again, which are quite a bit arranged with just a couple of hours of doing, like where the, where is on the far right here. Uh there are high levels, uh large, large demand here for the, you know, charging infrastructure required to support them, really. The infrastructure to support them a little bit uh larger than uh just a standard. You you know, you're likely have to upgrade a transformer if you're wanting to uh install this kind of a bit. Number two targets are uh two-way or two-way, um both of them are generally like um uh a a um they're a bit of a charger, they're about twelve or sixteen miles of charge every given hour, charging dependent on the type of battery, type of vehicle you've got. And then if you're just starting to do another one charger or um it will open your well in your garage definitely much longer. Um the time it would take to charge your vehicle, so three to five minutes per hour there. Uh a lot of examples on the market that uh or about the EV um prices, so either so much of the people that open the store for three, three, five model years, it uh uh might be available to somebody who's interested. Again, probably there are, I think, there's a lot of incentives available from several and Colorado and utility sources to their, you know, their range in in value. But seven, five hundred dollars a year, or they'll be here from uh several of them, uh five thousand to seven thousand on a uh good in the state. And then Excel and uh Black Hills, depending where you are in the city, through all of these top Black Hills, but they're very, very uh incentives for installing these chargers, but also special weight structures specifically for EV uh users as well. Apparently, uh six hundred units that you can afford in the free, and that's about thirty-eight percent of the total different revenue. Uh lower than the state average currently of about almost three percent. Uh again, one of our big motivators or barriers is availability of chargers. Right now, the city has a total of uh five public available chargers. We have three that we've uh pre-level two charge. We've had a main tree garage, fifth and third, and at the West Side Garage. We've also recently um figured the blue targets are the ones with the solar panels that you see um in the parking lot across the street here from City Hall next to Booz, Castle Booz. Uh and there's also one uh similar to the parking lot there. Those are blue woods quite a bit, so we're we're happy to see that. Uh but they were, I mean, solar wind are unique and they don't require any way of electricity anymore in part vehicles, um or battery packs, or battery packs that charge those vehicles. So part of the um infrastructure analysis, uh part of what we need to figure is how many ports do we need? Based on the number of vehicles we sell, based on what we expect to see for growth over the next years, how many ports do we need to be able to support the public as uh as they move forward? So in general, we're looking at um a total of thirty-eight public level two charging ports. That's the number that's the most important there. And the eight public DC fast charging ports. So we're talking about both ports. Some of the stations have two ports, two cables, where you know, two vehicles plug into the same charger. Generally, when they do that, they're splitting with their power, and so it lowers the rate at which they charge. Um so having enough ports is going to be important. Uh in the public space, again, not all of these need to be installed, so it's both before and the last year, but there are private uh it depends on how private you need, and this is based on a new data tour that uh it's kind of concerning that based on your um number of vehicles out there, and the miles driven, uh location, all kinds of things. And so the thirty-eight and eight number are the two in question. I want to say that clearly, we have uh two different EV charger projects in the works. One of them is to install four direct fast chargers at the main street garage. So in the parking lot, I guess, is the garage, there will be four new SASS chargers uh in the coming year. The, there are also a total of five level two chargers, and there will be split up, two of them will be at the main street garage as well, and three of them will be at the West Side Garage near the tramhut and the hockey arena. That's going to chip away at this uh need for the thirty eight. Um again, you mentioned that one of the, the third level here is um also program recommendations. Uh one of the proposals suggested in the study or in the plan was the uh use of telemetry studies. And what that means is using uh coverage to identify there's some vehicle type, route, um location, all of these things, uh what the airbrush might be best suited for um two different EV or boat replacements for EV vehicle. I do those again on um how far things are driven, how fast they're driven, um the number of factors that uh you can, you can buy a piece of the body into the vehicle and and it can help provide some uh information, let it analyze that. So that's one, one of the two. Um the private budgets are under uh a community, so um we've already been approached by a number of, I'll send it to you if you come in and why I look at using public right away or public infrastructure to uh set up public EV charging, so they would, they would trigger there as well as some install private infrastructure. You know, all the way to the main infrastructure, um nobody has coming forward with a real proof of something that's ready to bring forward yet, but there are, there are a number of entities out there that have approached the city, at least to start discussions on those kinds of things. Um, there's some public transportation, electric transportation, some of them that I know, transit and working on. Um it is, it is likely that in the future, the only option that might be supported for purchasing vessels may be electric. Um so when you start talking uh in detail about speaker and the defending of things, mainly defending they will certainly need to be outfitted with charging infrastructure, so these are parts that are addressed in this plan. Right, uh the study, the plan rather, looked at a number of the good sites, in some of their public and in some of their private areas, that they were just a a list of recommended sites where they have uh they have opportunities that might be good to have charging infrastructure available in public. A map generally showing the posture of where those systems are. Uh just as a uh point of information here, um the distance, the distance of energy, how much energy with the sensor, there's only a little bit of that doing, a little bit of the top shown at the right end. So maybe the watt hours is probably makes sense uh between public and private use, public and uh city use of the city's chargers. But it's still about a hundred fifty megawatt hours, but obviously with additional vehicles in the fleet and this uh it's just that we can use some of the chargers, and you can see that we've been uh putting in quite a bit more energy on this third time's amount in twenty twenty-four. So the data we have this information uh in November, but it looks like November has been a bit of a snow, but it will get the program in September, April, and April for So of the data, we heard this information uh, in November, but it looks like government has been in the best sign, but it will get the public in September, April, and April for individual users drivers are using the city's chargers. Total five hundred and seventy-eight stations in October, three one thirty-two, this is a bit of a Mars to three up, and so there is increased demand and usage of the city's infrastructure. And we mentioned the energy sector twenty twenty-four, but here in October and September, you're seeing twenty uh, eight and six megawatt hours respectively in those two months. We've gone on speaking with both of plug-ins, but pretty uh, an average session length of about three hours and thirty-five minutes. And we're seeing about two and a half hours of charging time and about thirty-five minutes to thirty-nine minutes in idle time. I mentioned that the plan identifies a strategy that um can help us, I guess, side up future investments in E V charging infrastructure. So this uh, having this plan certainly aligns us with state goals uh, and and positions us well to be able to take advantage of grants or other opportunities when charging infrastructure is available from C E O who are very interested in um these resources, uh, resources available to sit in the past. Um, I think it's also important because it provides a strategic vision, whether we apply for a grant or that we're installing things in accordance with a structured plan, it's not just uh, we're we're bringing a charger over here. Uh, but there's been analysis on this to determine kind of the best places where those chargers might need to be. So we we asked a presentation in November, September, where we set the rates, uh, so the rates were set at twenty-five cents per kilowatt hour. And uh, twenty-five cents a minute for idle time, starting with thirty-minute rate period. That's sort of the whole charger you're currently set up. Uh, part of the E V idea also come back and reanalyze that within the new construction, we have the even fast chargers and uh, make sure that it it would be in conjunction with other uh, private chargers that may be installed in the future. Uh, make sure they weren't structured correctly, and so there's a number of factors that we might consider here as we look at rate setting in the future. That concludes my, oh, I will, I will say, uh, there was a resolution, obviously, to adopt the C D plan that will be coming forward and on the November twenty-fifth meeting. Uh, so I uh, happy to answer any questions you've got about the presentation or the plan.
Um, all right, before I forget, I have a couple of questions. So over the five public um, charging stations that we have now, what has been our revenue that we've generated off of that?
Right, so again, that rate structure just went into effect here in uh, October first. So up until that time, since uh, twenty twenty-two, I believe, we've had uh, the chargers were made available for free. So Black Hills also has one in their parking lot that they've made available to the public as well, made narrowed all rates generally.
In the study, what's the anticipated revenue of, what did you say, forty-four or forty-eight stations?
Sure, of the, well, kind of the thirty, it depends on what the rate is set at. So that twenty-five cents a kilowatt hour currently for the level two chargers uh, is probably very close to break even. So we need to do some homework and make sure that's the case.
In the studies, didn't they tell us uh, where we needed to be?
Not exactly, so again, it depends on the cost of the installation of them. So there's two, when I mentioned there's uh, there's uh, some economic analysis tools, financial analysis tools that will help us in terms of the cost of installation and the cost of energy uh, and and um help us, I guess, identify what um, rates we need to set in order to offset those costs. Ultimately, the grants are going to be a big part of that picture going forward. Um, and so we don't want to, we don't want to set this up where it's going to be an economic burden on the city. Um, but up to this point, energy, energy costs have been somewhere in the ballpark of uh, about five hundred dollars a month. Um, going forward now with the rates set, those are set in a way that will cover and offset the cost of energy so far.
And so when you talk about partnering with other people, other businesses that are thinking about putting out charging stations, obviously, for, you know, profit. Why, why wouldn't they just be buying a piece, a a lot or a piece of land and just like a gas station, have so many charging stations? What's the, what's the need or what's the benefit of partnering with the city?
I think there are some uh, some soft calls approaches here that, you know, we need to, we we need a policy decision, I think, at some point here from council about how we want to approach those kinds of things. As I mentioned, nobody's brought a uh, a deal forward that is um, ready, ready to be considered uh, in seriousness yet. But there are entities out there, they're asking the question about the use of public right of way to install uh, chargers and make them available to the public. Um, that's an advantage in that they feel the cost of the installation, they feel the cost of maintenance and operation. But we also want to make sure that those uh, folks that are doing that are good partners and that they're maintaining the things that are in the right of way and not becoming a nuisance. Um, so there's a number of um, considerations there.
What's the advantage to the city to partner with private enterprises to provide, you know, to go into the charging station business, I guess you would say.
The primary would be, again, the the city doesn't have to outlay the cost of that capital to install that infrastructure. And so there may be a hybrid model here too that makes sense, where, you know, if there, if there's either chargers on public property made available to the public, that's one way that council could approach, um, it's it's um way of, I guess, building or implementing this uh, revenue plan. The other uh, again, is through the method that we've used so far, which have been like applying for grants and so far pretty successfully, uh, as mentioned, we've got those getting ready to be uh, be put in.
Is that the difference? Is the city qualified to get the grants where a private business may not be qualified to receive the grants, is that?
I will say that Colorado Energy Office has grants that are made available both to municipalities and others, no other grantors out there as well. Um, so some of them are available to private and some may not be, but in general, the programs that we've been applying for have also been open to uh, private entities as well to apply.
Mm-hmm. Uh, questions from anyone else on council, council and Martinez? Andrew, how long does this plan, like, what's the duration of the plan?
We're going to start at about five years, it's five years forward look, uh, again, it's it's uh interesting timing because of the recent elections and potential policy change in the future here, uh, but it is certainly uh, aligned still with state goals and where state resources are made available to make this work. Uh, this is, this plan, I think, helps us in in strateg- uh, strategically applying for the grants to be most effective for us to uh, feel this infrastructure in the future.
The um, slide that you talked about earlier with all of the rebates on it? Can you talk a little bit about how the city can use the tax credits?
Yeah, so for instance, the city purchased electric vehicles in the last several years, and each one of those is eligible for a federal and state tax credit. So the city is applying for those refunds or those credits to be returned back to the city. Uh, I want to say it was twenty-eight-ish vehicles and I'm going to get the number wrong, but several hundred thousand dollars worth of credits that are coming back to the city.
Oh, great.
So that's uh, a huge, huge benefit back. Uh, it reduces the way the cost of buying those vehicles upfront, and then the energy costs are significantly lower than per mile than um uh, uh, uh you know, a traditional petroleum-fueled vehicle.
Have we received those rebates yet?
I don't believe so, I think that that application uh, is is in the works as we speak.
Okay. Was the cost of those vehicles about one point eight seven million dollars or somewhere in that dollar range?
I don't have the information right in front of me, that's why I don't have the number on, um, I want to say it's about thirty-eight vehicles total in the fleet, uh, is what we've currently got, so that's between again, um, Ford F one fifty lightnings, Machis, uh, a few other electric vehicles as well that are that are in the fleet used for ranging purposes from administrative to currently patrol vehicles as well.
Uh, council comments?
Yeah, we have on the dais, we have a gentleman that's been in the car business for a long time, so I'm going to defer to him in a minute, but I got so many points here of concern, um this just feels like we're trying to drive around pegging to a square hole again, the E V industry has not panned out to what they've said it is, um, everything from the rate of batteries, the minerals to sup- supply the minerals they need for child and slavery concerns, the ranges, how long they can last, uh, the technology that we have coming forward, and with uh, clean coal is getting better. We don't talk about hydrogen, we don't talk about natural gas, we don't talk about solars, they even have solar roof now for cars. There's just to be, there's so many more options, and I, to be honest with you, I think the people that get hurt the most on trying to force this down everybody's start alone, you know, folks, this is not a reasonably affordable option for people who don't have a lot of money. And I think the com- trying to get rid of the combustible engine, where a lot of us grew up with that is really important, folks that don't have a lot of money, when we're talking about the cost of these batteries, the cost of the vehicles, it's outrageous. So here we go again, utilizing grants to pay for this stuff, and that grants is taxpayer money, I don't care how you want to cover it, I don't have, how you want to dismiss it, that's real money. And I, I'm hoping we start thinking about poor folks that have to deal with this kind of nonsense, but that's my comment, but I'd like to just get something from Mark in reference to in this industry, Mark, maybe you can, is there E V coming along that dying, is it? What's, what's the issue here?
No, I think for all of the reasons that you stated that the the automotive industry has backed off of E Vs quite a bit. Um, I think the concerns come into infrastructure, obviously, which we're talking about tonight. Um, and we think in, you have to take into account that Pueblo's still considered a rural area. And when you're getting into uh, vehicles that have a two hundred mile range or a two hundred and fifty mile range, uh sometimes it's, it's not easy to commute and do the things that you need to do from Pueblo. Where you, when you live in a metro district, it's much easier to get to where you're going and get charged up and things like that. Mm-hmm. The other problem I see is that and I think you kind of touched on that, we have a new administration coming in that is very much in favor of gas vehicles and and uh starting to uh get the uh, the wells going again and and I doubt very seriously that there'll be a very big impetus on electric vehicles over the next four years, but
if I go, if I may, just, I I don't want to, um wait, I'm trying to find the stretch, but I I um, there's no source in the end here, there's no uh, telling people have to be buying that this plan is trying to be received, the infrastructure must be tried to move the demand as expected, and that but again, the plan is really kind of focused on identifying where the city might be benefited by appliance or resources, so we're saying, yes, the truth is, because that's the way where we're going to be the right places to put the public, just the first thing we need to public meet. But not through um, um helping there if they have to have an E V and we're absolutely right, um, I I operate the same E V, so the vehicle here there is um, it was committed, it works great, a blue income. Um, but if you're driving versus the data, better than our schools, they can be charged, they said, I have the right charger, it's the first available to you. And then the realistic challenge is E V better safe than one of the pieces that inside is still being over like public infrastructure in the right places. We have an opportunity here, so moving our, at this platform, the middle highway here, five to five, I mean, a highway fifty, they have drivers, stop every E Vs. It's not necessarily the area that came out of town, but also highway groups. Uh, they take a couple hours to charge and do a phone, you get a little bit of a charge on, so actually they do the backs available, we're down that way. Which is the um, availability of SASS chargers here is one of the um, kind of strategic, not objectives, strategic opportunities that uh, available to us here as well, that might go on to survive or it's a selection on its own as well. So, thank you.
Council Gomez?
Yeah, that's a huge problem, um, there are there's folks that earn a little bit of better income, maybe they can have chargers at their home. Um, again, I think this is going to impact low income, uh, again, I don't think we're thinking taking care of everybody excepting the select group of folks that can afford it, um I I just, I don't have a problem, I think if we had to phase it in maybe the pub- public transportation and those departments and the buses and those kind of things, I can see it, because they'd have access to a charging station right away. But we just say, hey, it's going to take a couple hours before you really does charge, and just, you know, that could put a real pinch in your day. Um, so for the twelve, I just think we're trying to force it, I think the timing's not there, and I just couldn't see myself supporting this thing right now at all, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Martinez.
I I agree with Congressman Martinez, um we're trying to station that I know that not that exists. Um I don't know, there are actually, I mean, right now, there are five public, they're the city, they own E V chargers. There are also other privately owned E V charging around the city as well, a few, um, I would say there's some of my P C C around the station. Um, but the fitted hardwired, they have a grid connected, and the two solar ones are um, like, filled in and running pretty well. Um, again, they have been uh, simple, like, I've been told October, uh, but their rates uh, kicking in here will change their usage, so it'll be interesting to see when I see once are that changes or not. Um um, and we will say it again making the infrastructure available and having a plan, and then we're starting to be available, is really different. We're saying, we're not doing this plan to incentivize E V adoption. I don't think that's what we're doing, I think we're trying to make sure that we're ready to receive, or ready to apply for those things and resources that are made available. So I encourage council to look at it from that perspective, because it's not, again, coming and telling anybody to go buy E V or or that this is the way we have to go, but just really looking at rates, you know, it's expected to grow a little bit over the next few years. So again, thirty-eight ports and nine, I want to say thirty-eight and eight, I believe are the numbers there, and several of those are already already being met, so we're still in current with plan, a bunch of what we've got. Uh, but again, we do have to comply for any financial, with the resources in place, and so we'll get some through the public to meet that need through forward. I'm sure we'd have to answer, you know I'm kind of working there um have relates uh, to the the number of vehicles that are um, basically electric use in this community, I I I and and basically from what I'm grabbing, and this is just my assumption, that we don't have enough ports to take care of the number of vehicles that are um electric, am I correct? According to the project, and I will say, I will say, well, some are semi-provoked or so, they are uh, sort of registered E Vs in the city in the city, uh, and so we're also offering that drop something from other outside areas, and so there are certainly some other people that would come in and use ours and we're assuming those who are passing through on the freeway, on the freeway. So there's a real demand there than just our dependents of the city, most of our folks in the city publicly, if you have any new uh, I would go to a guest, that most of their Facebook app access was targeted by them, and um, had good that information, because it's we're just simply much more challenging to rely on public infrastructure only with your E V charge than it is to a little further, if she's got that opportunity. But I answered your question.
I'm sure he's, I think, you know, there's probably a perspective from the public that says, hey, I don't want that city of public only, all the gas stations in town. Okay, there's always going to be that perspective also, uh, it's government overreach, uh, they don't need to, you know, if we're going to have to go to E V vehicles, then there should be private businesses that open those, and we shouldn't really have any part of it, it's probably mostly their perspective. It's great that, you know, that boosts grants for these studies and so forth, but you know even though, even though we utilize them, and if they end up that we do nothing with them, then we've been wasteful of taxpayer dollars. Council Martinez, you have anything to say?
Yeah, I guess, um can you remind me, Andrew, is our goal for level E V three thirty-five?
Well, that's right, because uh, the hope is that we're able to get to twenty twenty-five, let's see, fully adopted goal.
I, and you know what, I I recognize that this is in line, the E V readiness plan is in line with that goal. Um, as we're making our community, um, you know, more clean, we're talking about, uh, you know, not necessarily relying on fossil fuels, this, I, this is just a plan. It's not a mandate, it's not um even really encouraging people to buy E Vs, I don't understand why we wouldn't, why we wouldn't adopt this plan. Particularly if it's helping us um, be more competitive in the grant sphere. And I don't understand why we wouldn't adopt this, it's 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 not placing a burden on our low-income communities, which has been talked about, it's not it's not a a financial impact at all to the city, I don't understand why we wouldn't pass this plan.
I understand that. I don't know a lot of folks in some of the poorer areas that have a charging station in the garage for that amount of comfort of an electric vehicle, and I don't know what the comparative costs are in reference to current E V prices to charge versus gas. And that is, I'd like to know more about that information before I make a definitive statement, but I don't have a problem phasing things in if it's proven. And if everybody can benefit, and so just a select few.
I just, I just want to note, Council Gomez, that this isn't saying we're, we're phasing a hundred percent EV char- EV only vehicles though by a certain date. This is not, this is not saying at all like we're gonna, we're gonna add, you know, uh, uh, we're, we're gonna make District Four um buy all these EV cars. That's not what this is saying at all. Um, this is saying though, when the city receives funding for this, we're gonna be strategic on where we're going to place those, so that way Pueblo wins and Coors alike. Who are driving through our community and who are coming to, you know, our, all of our great tourist attractions can charge their cars. This, this is by no means saying that. District four people, District three people, District one people, District two people need to buy EV cars at all.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying for me, the, I think a lot of the information is already in the EV industry's failing. Here we go again, trying to make something pass and prove that we can afford it somehow, but you're leaving a large segment of the people out of the, out of the equation. I'm not saying that. I would hope it would work. I think it would be great for all of us, but I don't think it's there yet. I just don't.
Council Flores?
You know, one of the beauties of our country is that uh we have a free enterprise system. You, we really should be prepared to meet the demand if there is a demand. You're not saying you want to implement a plan that's gonna have more EV stations than we need. The plan is a legitimate uh. Document that's going to tell us hopefully what our need is and then deal with that. Uh, but in no way should we be fooling around with our economic system, which says, uh, let, let the market decide what that is. Uh, if it's less, that's fine. If it's more, we've, we've got a plan to deal with it. I don't understand why we're talking about uh. Um, you know, mixing the plan, uh, when in fact, uh, I think our business community, uh, both the city and the county, we need to know what that demand is in order to deal with it.
It's, I believe the intent of this plan is to kind of quantify that demand, reject the demand going forward, and to identify publications again, mainly at. Public locations, public facilities, where charging infrastructure might need to be installed to support that demand. The other cluster of uh EV chargers that are kind of our city, works in this downtown corridor or areas down. Um, but there are no city limits that show here, no city on chargers on the north side, there are no, there's a south side, inside or the west side, uh, the really kind of central right along this downtown corridor. Um, and there are city facilities at different locations that uh looking at where they would be installed, that's the purpose of this plan, that necessarily to uh force the. Uh, the public or bribe a player of the city, if that makes sense. There was a, uh, there was a bullet point that you had, and it was called destination anxiety. Uh, the last thing probably needs is for people to think that we're a spot, they don't have them. And uh they're going off to another destination. So we can eliminate a lot of our tourist anxieties about destination anxiety. And all of the, all of the stations in the city currently on the charge point network, which is a national or international company. Uh, so all of the stations that we operate appear on our app, allowing drivers to see where they are, so they can see them whether on the freeway or. If they live here in town and just want to find a place to charge, there's uh, there's a very good, obviously online.
I think another element that has to be included in the plan is how many people are getting, uh, both my son and grandson have EV cars and they've got their own charging station in the garage. I think at some point that'll affect the demand too. It, it's, it's a logistical, it's, it's a viability, and then the EV much, much stronger, I guess, if you do have that availability at all.
Councilin Boston, do you have a, um, have an EV vehicle?
Um, I do have an EV vehicle and I do a bulk of my charging at my house. I do have an EV charger. Um, you know, it's something that I probably spent about twelve hundred dollars installing. And uh, for reference, you know, on this current vehicle that I have now. I think I've probably spent uh about a hundred and fifty dollars to drive in the last three months. Um. And you know, I've probably put on, I don't know, I think like eighteen hundred miles. So equivalency, it is a lot cheaper than gas. But um, you know, I, I do think EVs are a cute idea. I don't think it's necessarily the answer to the future, but uh, they do have some good purposes. And having a readiness plan where, you know, I'm, if I'm not mistaken, the Model Y is the number one selling car in America right now. So there is a lot of people buying EVs. And um, you know, I know it is a niche market, but you know, the, the technology is a lot further than it was a few years ago. There are some car manufacturers that are getting away from it, but there's people like Tesla that are solely making these vehicles and a lot of people do buy them. So I don't know, it might not be a terrible idea to invest in some infrastructure to make sure there is outlets out there for people.
Okay, with that being said, um, Councils Latino?
That's okay, thank you. Um, obviously, it's a hard subject, topic, I don't want to capitalize it. Like, I'm sure women's, I, I am listening. Which are, are struggling to put food on the table. And, and we're talking about people who have barges in the garage and driving thousands of dollars customers or whatever, the highway tax. And uh, but probably, it's bothering me a lot. And without you, um, it would be gracious enough and willing enough to help us with the things we're doing, but we're doing it from the side and the crucial, the problems we're dealing with. And the profits to be made. But again, like Master Gomez, I feel the same way. And there are more important things to install and putting charging stations for Tesla's engine. This one is Tom.
All righty.
Well, yes, I mean, I really had only uh considerations in reference to maybe phasing to maybe a hybrid. I don't, I, I wish I knew more about the, the subject matter. But a hybrid seems to me a natural move over if instead of going full EV for companies, I think they're basically diluting a lot of their EV market by more and more and more. Even in, in these companies are going to happen. Okay, so they're, they're, they're starting, they're starting to realize it's, it may be a great idea, but the timing is just off. So how, how are we with a hybrid market in reference to? So we're going to have some hybrid vehicles, running this peak, but it drives like a normal vehicle, it looks like it needs some of the gas tank, and it has a, a electric. Which are these uh providing some of the power for the vehicle. We also plug in electric hybrids. It's as long as vehicles still may be plugged in charge from time to time, just like uh as uh a hundred percent fully EV. Um, you can mention also some other technologies, something with you, right? You mentioned hydrids, and so there are especially, you know, about the. Uh, potential site or installation of a hydrogen fuel station here in Pueblo. It would be interesting to know because. Right now, most of the hydrogen blocks are a little bit sort of on the west coast because there's not infrastructure available for those. So there's a, a, an outside institution called New Day that's uh been looking at uh, virtual system of law, I believe, is what they are going through. But uh, they're looking at citing an EV facility, a hydrogen fuel station. Um, and the primary. I think initial first that might be, you know, a benefit there might be the uh, like, the heavy vehicles. Uh, like the self-structure, that kind of thing. So there are, there are a number of, to be honest, being it, that is a, that's a, that might be up to the future. It's not a subject of the TV plan, but there are other things I figure on, like alternative fuels, um, and uh, big gas or just straight electric as well.
Thank you.
All right, with that being said, um, we will adjourn and return at seven twenty. Five, seven twenty five.
Twenty five.
Anyone who would like to sign up for public comments? There will be six people selected for public comment from the chart in the back.